I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning. All righty, look at a lot of, and we have pink donuts to commemorate Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So that's a good thing.
And we have to advertise where they're from.
They're from?
O H Donuts.
O H Donuts.
Bergen. And Nick was so gracious to carry them in here.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick. My mother was a breast cancer survivor, so treated her amazing in the hospital locally on the breast cancer floor. It was just amazing.
So if you have a chance to go to one of the events or be a part of one of the events, please do that. It helps the residents of our county, female residents, and the male residents. So it's not only females that get breast cancer. So I just want everyone to know that so we could help both of us with a little financial donation to either hospice or the Cancer Society, of your choice.
So we have, we're going to move our presentation to the beginning of the meeting because that's the most important part of the meeting today. And the Chamber of Commerce provided awards to, business awards for 2023. And I believe Carol attended, and we were not able to attend.
Right, we were not able to.
It was during a meeting. And so we had, we had asked the recipients to come to a meeting so that we could present them with the award that we had ordered for them. And we have, I think, three of the recipients here today. And we're honored that you were able to make it, you know, this morning on a Thursday at 10:00 a.m. and fight it, fight the congestion downtown and be here to receive the awards that we have on behalf. And we'll start off with the co-owners of Louva Bella Winery. And we have both Marissa and Evan here today, correct? All right. Yeah, how do you want to? Yeah, why don't you, why don't you, you know, tell us a little bit about everything so we get along camera? And, you know.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Give us a little spill.
Hi, everybody. My name's Marissa. This is Evan. We're both the co-owners of Louva Bella Winery. And we're just so grateful to be able to have the opportunity to grow our business here in the Youngstown area. Passionate for wine. My grandparents immigrated here from Italy and brought over the Italian tradition of winemaking. So I found myself helping make the wine as a young girl and found my passion there as well. And I ended up studying winemaking at Cornell University to study, you know, the craft of analogy and viticulture to professionalize our tradition. And eventually worked at E and J Gallo Winery out in California for additional experience before coming back to the 330. So when I was 22 years old, I moved 3,000 miles back from sunny California to put up the flag of my first brand of redhead wine, which I recently re-bred into Reds. But I met Evan, who's my husband and business partner, through that journey. And we decided to put every dollar we had into an SBA loan down payment to buy Louva Bella Winery for my parents, to take it to the next generation, but also write our own chapter without my, my parents' two cents. Love you, Mom and Dad, but it's been fun. And now we're in 10 states. We're the fastest growing winery on the East Coast and one of the fastest growing wineries in Ohio. And we're entering the state of Texas the next couple of weeks with 106 Kroger stores in Houston. So we're definitely spreading our roots far and wide outside of Youngstown, but are happy to have our manufacturing and continue to add jobs and opportunities to the community. So thank you very much. Evan, I don't know if you have any other things you'd like to add?
No, I think you summed it up.
Okay. Really appreciate the invitation here to receive the honor and we're really grateful for everything.
Do you want to do that? Well, we could, I mean, I'm happy you're here. Because you didn't bring us anything to drink.
Today on a Thursday.
I mean, I filled a little crosetco, a little red wine, you know, just to kick it in. No, I'm joking, but I wish you the best of luck. You come from a great family.
Thank you.
I knew your dad for many years and your mom, and they are so proud of you two. You and your sister.
Yes.
So God bless you and keep it up.
And you've created an amazing atmosphere there too. Because even, even when you're not, when you're not wine drinkers, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not a wine drinker, but, you know, when we go to your place and, and my wife brings home bottles, you know, it's refreshing. It's not, it's not like, I don't know, I won't say it's not like, some of them, you know, I believe there's like a sangria or something that you have that's really good, that's refreshing, you know? So, I mean, when you're out cutting the grass and you come in and you want, you know, I don't drink carbonated and I don't drink beer, you know, I'm not going to come in from cutting the grass and get a, you know, a crown on the rocks, you know? And it's refreshing, it's refreshing having a sangria, you know? And, and some of the difference, and, and, you know, we, I actually, one of my fundraisers had a wine taste and I got all of the tubs from your, you know, from your winery.
Oh, wonderful.
And everybody was, you know, they're all happy that, that when they get to drink your wine.
Thank you.
You know, it's amazing. So you guys have done a fantastic job. You make the whole county and the, the whole valley, you know, on the, you put us on the map with, with your product and, you know, expanding into different communities and into different states. And the, the growth that you've done is amazing, you know, so.
We appreciate the support and know you see Evan and I out in market, but, you know, we have a whole team that it wouldn't be possible without them. So really grateful to have a, a strong team at Louva Bella too to make it all happen.
You know, one thing about this valley is they support their own.
Yes.
You know, they're, we're, we're all very personable and we're all very community, you know? So it's, it's, it's something that, you know, you, you make sure you go out and you eat at local restaurants and not chains and you, you buy products that are made locally. And, you know, I pass out other cream because it's close and we drink your wine, so it's all good. So thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'd like to say a few words. I too have known your family forever. Your grandpa Al Russo is very dear friend of mine, who was an experienced winemaker, as well as your dad, and of course, your grandpa and all your grandparents. And I remember when your dad came to me, God, I don't know how long ago it was, 15 years ago? And he said, "I'm going to open a winery." He says, "Anthony, what do you think about the property that was the old Honda barn on 224?" I said, "Wow." I said, "It's where my dad bought my first Z50 Honda." He said, "I'm going to buy that. I'm going to make it into a, into a winery." And Lord behold, he truly did. And now you have a winemaking Mecca right there in Poland. And he has passed the torch on to your generation, you and your husband Evan. And we're just very proud, I'm so proud to know you and your family. I see you on Facebook, Redhead Wine. You're expanding everywhere, but you kept your operations here and I hope you always do. And by the way, they have some of the best food. And I know where all those recipes came from. And I don't know if Michelle still comes down there and cooks, but I tell you, she used to spoil the hell out of me.
Yes. The recipe is still partially my grandma's, but she has since retired. But one thing Anthony did not share, he's definitely an integral part of our history because at our grand opening weekend, he shredded the electric guitar. And I was so impressed. I remember it was, it was awesome. We had a band and Anthony took over and I was blown away. I was maybe in eighth grade and I was like, wow, this guy is pretty awesome.
I forgot about that.
I never will forget that. It was really cool.
I remember when you brought in Boom Boom Mancini too.
Yeah.
For his wine, we had a little thing there, but that was a nice night. Had a lot of great memories there and still do.
Definitely.
Proud of you, so proud of you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Bless you.
Oh, we have a diamond, don't cash it.
So, Marissa, you can't spend this, but you know, it's, it's as many carrots as, as I'm sure that your business will grow to be in your heart is already, so.
Very nice.
The commissioners would like. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like we're part of the family, so.
Thank you.
Let's get upset your.
Sure.
Yeah, sure, sure. I'll come on the other side.
Balance it out here.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I will.
See that?
Lining up a case or two.
I have, it's good when you know the owner.
Marty, tough act to follow, you know? I mean, it's, it's definitely going to be difficult, but you know what? If anybody's up to, you are, so. You know, Marty Looney's the business manager for Local 396 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. And he was honored for labor, for labor on behalf of the Chambers Businesses of the Year, Entrepreneurs of the Year event. So Marty, you've done an amazing job for all of us for so long. And part of our Port Authority Board, anybody that can control Ed Moransky and Sam Cavelli at a meeting and, and the Trumbull County Commissioners is a pretty amazing individual. And, you know, we've grown to, to know that quite well. He is the president of the CIC Board for the county and just, you know, goes on and on and on. And does a, does a great job, Marty. Why don't you come up and give us a little background, a little history? And that 390, that 396, you know, that's a good Chevy engine.
Yeah, that's right. That's how it actually was named.
Really?
So there, a little history for Local 396, that we were being merged in 1998 and Joe Mansky was the business manager at the time. And his brother was on a sub in, during Vietnam, and the number on the sub was 396. But they were both motorheads. So when they came time to rename the local number, it was Local 396. So that's actually how it became.
That's cool.
Yeah, yeah. I'd really be remiss without thanking the commissioners here. You know, when you first start into some of these things, you don't realize all, all the things in the lives that you may touch. You know, I was fortunate through our local to be on our apprenticeship committee for a lot of years and, you know, you know, touched a lot of lives to be able to expand what we do here in the valley. You know, union labor has such a rich history around what we do here, along with local business and how, how we interact with each other, I think has never been better. Fortunate that I'm president of the Building Trades also, so we get a chance to see all of the things that kind of come into the valley. But, you know, I'm really humbled to be able to accept this. You know, we have a good relationship with, with the commissioners, of course, and through the CIC Board, through the Port Authority. And, you know, we're just doing really good things here in the valley. I mean, really, really good things are happening right now. And with the amount of work that's coming into Ohio, you know, we're going to set this up so that it's going to be good for the next 30, 40 years. And it's just, it's just great to be a part of it. I can't thank you enough to have the foresight to let us kind of do our stuff with the Port Authority, number one. Anthony and the team have done such a wonderful job on that, on that, that end. We've grown quite a bit here in the last couple of years and expect that to go quite a bit more. You know, same thing with our local, you know, there's such a good team there. We put a lot of good officers together. Brent Kelly's our agent here sitting with me. And, you know, same thing, three years ago, when we kind of took this over, Tim Caliott was the business manager before me and, and said, "Hey, listen, you know, we can set this thing up for the next 10 or 15 years if we take, make the, take the right moves here the first couple of years," and we have. So, you know, on behalf of, of labor in the valley, I want to thank you for being able to share this with us.
Thank you, Marty. Well, I've known Marty for many years, union people, all of them, way back. Because of Frank, my husband was part of that union.
Yep.
And the first thing he said to me when I started this process of becoming, running for position, he said to me, "First thing I'm going to tell you, I, you have, I want, I know you want to run. I'm 100% in it. I'm 100% with you, but don't you ever forget where we came from." He says, "We're, we're labor, we're union," and I'm 390, well, it wasn't 396 then.
27 at that time.
And he says, "And then when it became 396," he goes, "And you're 396 solid every day." I says, "I get it." I says, "And you know what? I get it because when you bring their team on, whether they're contractors that are a part of the union structure, whether it's Marty and his group out at the Union Hall where he's the president, they're helpful. And it's not only to go out and be in the business light and to be a union, "We got to get you in, we got to get you in." When you call Marty and say, "Marty, I'm coming in to see the, the crew. I need somebody to help me with ramps. I need, I need help with somebody going to J Oak Hill to do plumbing, steaming the equipment, things like that. Could you get volunteers?" They packed the place. And we, and they do all the work free on their days off. So they are a partnership that they've given to not only Mahoning County, but I know you do that in Trumbull as well, to all over the residents here. And, and I appreciate that. God bless you and keep up the good work. You've got a great team out there, as well as with the port and the CIC.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, you, you talked a little bit there about what a humbling experience is. You know, I, I have a picture of the house I grew up in on the South Side, right behind the desk at the Union Hall. And every day I look at it to kind of remind you where you're from and what you do and how you're supposed to approach things and the lessons that you learned growing up of, you know, not only respecting yourself, but respecting others and whether that's business, whether that's labor. You know, sometimes it doesn't always happen that way, but, you know, sometimes you gotta, gotta say a few things that are uncomfortable. But, you know, all in all, it's, it's just a message about what, how you, how you go about your everyday life.
Right, absolutely.
No, I, I couldn't agree more with Carol. And Marty, my dad taught me the same thing. Says, "Don't forget where you come from." And you embody that. There's not a task or a cause or anything. If you would ask Marty and his group or organization to do it, they don't say no. They jump right in on it. And Marty, what you've done through, through labor in our community has been miraculous. And like Carol said, they just don't go out and promote business and promote unions. They promote helping elderly people, young people, the united way. They help the elderly and the disabled. And there's never been a time that Marty has ever said no to us. And we're very proud to have him as chairman of, of our Port Authority because there's millions and millions of dollars that come through there, where there's projects that are put out here in our community. So we have an end with Marty being in there to represent labor, to make sure that our workers here get a fair share of those dollars. And Anthony Trevina does a great job. He works well with the union and all business entities. And I think over the years, because of Marty's tutelage and his experience, business and labor now get along and co-mingle well together. And Marty, that's you. You embody that. Yours blue collars, they come. I always admire you and respect you. And thank you for, for all that you do and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, Marty. It's, it's just, you know, when you talk about having union labor involved in projects and people say, "Well, you know, I, you know, I'm going to bid it out, this, that." Believe me, it's a proven fact that union labor does a better job, less expensive in the long run. You're not redoing things. You're not, you're not fixing things after the fact. Believe me, they have proven that time and time again. You know, and I, I had an old business card that I found that I, I'll have to show you or give to you. It was from the 40s. My grandfather had Ditzler Heating and Sheet Metal on Dewey Avenue. And I drove over to where it was at one time located. And it's obviously a vacant lot right now, you know? But during World War II, my dad's, my dad and his two brothers, they all worked for, you know, his, their father. And his one brother was the president of the union for the sheet metal workers at one time. And when they went into the service, my grandfather had to shut it down because there was no way to work. And so, but, you know, union goes way back in my family as well. You know, I'm proud to say Local 1418 United Steelworkers for the first 10 years of my life, you know? And, and Camel Seamless Hot Mill. And when you talk about mills, you worked at the Camel Seamless Hot Mill, believe me. You busted your butt, you know? And, and, you know, it, it creates an amazing work ethic. And that's why the valley's so strong, you know, in, in our, in our history and in our labor. And you have really been the center of that during my 10 years here, that has been the balancing act, you know, between, you know, like the Port Authority labor business, you know, the, the, the value that you add by bringing common sense approach to most everything really puts people, you know, into a position where it's, where it's easy to accept. You do an amazing job, you know, on that board and with the Port Authority. The Port Authority is, we're going to talk about next, is just an amazing group of individuals that work very hard on behalf of this valley. And people don't realize, and we try to make sure that we promote it, how much work that you really do. And the things that we do with the CIC that you chair as well and, and the things that go on behind the scenes, it's, it's truly a labor of love for you and the, and labor in the valley. And, and we're proud that you're here in the Mahoning County and we're, we're happy to be able to give you this honor, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
We have our fish fry coming up too, you know, we do every year for the Building Trades, which is next Friday. It's always a great time, what we, you know, that, that seems to be the, the center of the events that we do. So anybody has a chance, the 27th, we'll be there.
Beautiful. And it's always great fish too.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Appreciate you. Thank you for.
And last but surely not least, Anthony Trevina for the Port Authority. We just got through talking about the Port Authority, what an amazing job they do. You know, we have quite a few people here from the Port Authority, Sarah and, and Anthony and, and Krista and.
Linda.
Oh, and, and true. And so.
Nick.
And Nick, the donut man, I'm sorry, Nick.
The donut man.
You, you got roped into that. You know, it's going to be expected every meeting now, you know that. But Anthony, as executive director of the Port Authority, you know, just, you know, an amazing job. I mean, when you talk about, they did the work to help finance and construct and create the first TIF, Tax Increment Financing in Mahoning County with the RACINO. $60 million project that they oversaw, they financed, they ran it through. I mean, did an amazing job. So, I mean, that was really the beginning of the really close interaction with the Port Authority. And, and we've been able to, you know, they're, they're our economic development arm tool for the valley on behalf of Mahoning County, as well as the valley, you know? And, and do such a great job. And your team works so well together. It's like clockwork and, you know, you, you embody the, the feeling that, you know, if nobody, if nobody cares who gets credit, what a great job we could do, right? So you guys are really part of that. And the board of directors that we have in place do an amazing job. Marty Looney, one of the board of directors members. And please, why don't you come up and give us a little history and introduce everyone here.
Thank you. But before I start, I want to say not only congratulations to Marissa and Evan, but thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart in this valley. Because you are what embodies what young people, we want them to do in the valley. You went away, you went to school, you came back from home. You have to fill in those roots. You're building ground here and you're really doing, you're setting an example that we need to see more of. So we want to see your faces more in the valley. We want to prop you up in front of all the young people saying, "You can start your business right here in the Mahoning Valley and grow, you know, be very successful." So thank you for that and congratulations. Marty, I wish I had a good joke. I don't. If you don't know Marty, Marty's, I can't believe you didn't drop a joke up here. That's, that's surprising, but I, I couldn't ask for a better, and he loves this word, "us." Chairman, as, as a friend. And you talk about somebody who will just literally selflessly step up and take care of, you know, help anybody out at any time. What an amazing mentor, has a good calming effect on us. And I think the fact that you're talking about a board, I don't think it's a secret. I wasn't here at the time, of course Sarah was, that there was consideration of whether or not the Port Authority would continue with some of the dysfunction that it had at the moment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
A lot of, you know, I guess, I was not here, I read about it. But they lived through it. And I believe that a lot of that, that you held on because you put somebody like Marty Looney, Sam Cavelli, and others on the board, that they held it together. And I'm thankful for that. Because if you hadn't done that, I wouldn't have literally the best job in the Mahoning Valley. I took a recent survey test for, I mean, leadership in Mahoning Valley and it's called D-SIP. And the last question was, "When you look at your personality and your job, how do the two rank on a scale of one to 10?" And I swear to you, all I could think was, "Numbers aren't high enough." I love my job to a 15 or a 20. I wake up every day and I've never felt like it's work. I worked with some of the most talented, selfless, hardworking, stubborn, I'll throw some other kids in there. Hard-headed, brilliant people I know. And I think Rhonda's our latest addition. And I said, "You need to know something about our staff. We're stubborn, we're hard-headed, we're really talented, but in the end, we are going to do great things for this community together and nobody rises above anyone else." Krista, we, we stole from Boardman Township. What a great addition. This, this person, literally in her first 12 months, how much money have you brought in in grants that you've written?
The D-SIP was 8 million, so that's a impressive number.
And another 250 and, and it goes on. Sarah, I don't need to say, I mean, Sarah's, was here by herself before me and with the chaos and, oh, the stories. And thanks for staying on board and tolerating. And we sat in her office and, "What are we going to do with this Port Authority? You know, what are we going to do?" We literally sat there and we would sit there and, I mean, honestly, there was, other than the RACINO, there just wasn't a lot of deal flow because I don't know if the confidence in the agency was there to bring deals.
Right.
And so we knew that we first had to go out and, what's it called? Mecca La Facha. And she says, "You got to get out in there." And so we started meeting with people and talking to people and saying, "No, we want to help you. We're here." So what's that?
She's learning off them.
That's right, she got that from Carol. And as a result, the cooperative agreement with Warren came to play. That's, and if you haven't read the stories of the different properties, we've been a part of the Historical Society and the St. Vincent de Paul. And Nick Creashen, one of our additions a year and a half ago, did the West Warren Project. How many parcels, Nick?
Hundred-ish.
Over 100 parcels that had put out of productive use for multiple decades. And what is it now going to be in Warren?
Multiple phases, 100,000 square feet per phase, light industrial park.
And so Chuck George, who's not here today, worked with Nick on our team. And as a result of Sarah and I sitting in the mayor's office saying, "Hey, we can do this." It got done, you know, eight years later. It's now going to be a multi-phase industrial park. So I'm grateful every day for this job and I hope you keep me around. You are my bosses and I am very eternally grateful. I want to point out Mr. Ditzler, who called me and said, "Hey, Trevina, Antonio, you want a job? I said, "You need to apply for this." So I want to thank you for literally calling me. I know it was on behalf of all three of you.
In Florida.
Yeah, he called me in Florida and I said, "You want to, you want to come back to Ohio and work for the Port Authority?" And then I read the articles and said, "I don't know about that." No, I'm kidding, I kid. I couldn't be more proud. We've literally taken an agency that struggled for dollars to keep alive and we've really put some pretty good deals together. And I'll just tease you with this, there's way more exciting things in the future that we're going to be shouting from the mountaintop about. So you just don't know yet. So thank you very much. And I'm grateful to each one of you for your friendship, mentorship. Anthony and I, we go back, oh gosh, 25 years. Carol, I was a part of your first campaign when Ted ran for governor.
Yes, you were.
Very first city council campaign. We brought that Ari Ravenhoff in, who's now published books and ran your first campaign.
Yeah, they did.
He was running the campaign manager, yeah.
I had some really, thanks to you and John.
Yep.
And Cherry, I had some really innovative political leaders come in when I ran within the city.
That was exciting.
When I started to run here.
A lot of dignitaries came in for your council race.
Yeah, they did for council race. I was like, wow, this is really great.
Yeah.
I love a miss.
Last point I'll make is the award's not for me. It's very kind that they say "Business Advocate" in my name, but it's for the staff, the team, the board, all of you. So I, I, I just literally have nothing to do with this, other than I'm, I'm blessed with the opportunity to, you know, to drive the ship for the moment, so. to, you know, to drive the ship for the moment, so I'm thankful.
You know, you know, I, I have to say, he is exactly right. I was here when, when I first started, I was here when the port was not valued very good in the Mahoning Valley or Trumbull County at, at that point. There was so much dysfunction and there was no relationship with the port, Mahoning County, and with the business, business sector as well as the chamber. Everybody was like this. And I'm like, oh my God. So, and Sarah remembers this. And you weren't there yet, there was someone else. And I said, we need to have a meeting. So we had it at, what was that restaurant down here?
Yeah, the one on the parking deck.
Yeah, the one that's now the Mocha House. It was a bar and a restaurant. Anyway, so we're going to have a meeting there, I'm going to pay for it, we'll have lunch. Everybody come in, we're all going to work together. I thought, wow, this is great. Well, they ate the lunch, they left, and it was like this still. And then when things changed and you come on board with the Port Authority, I'm thinking, well, maybe that, things will change a little bit now. We, we have somebody at the head that could kind of bring our people back to the table, even though they were still a little dysfunctional at that point. It got to a point where it started to mesh. Things started to work. Economic development started, people took the trust in the port. When I'd mentioned we could get the help financially through the Port Authority, no one wanted to even work with them. They didn't want to have anything to do with them, they thought they were terrible. But the confidence that a leader brings along with the board members, who I am proud to have Marty and Sam and, and Rich Edwards and Maransky, Kathy Dillon. I'm proud to have that mesh there. Because right now, you have the best board you've ever had.
I think we have the best board in the Mahoning Valley.
You really do. And I, and, and they're there as, as your confidant. And they're also there to tell you when it's not a good deal.
Absolutely.
But it's the working relationship. Now, I've always had a problem with one of our economic development tools, and of course you know that. And I must say that my opinion has changed.
Thank you.
You know, I feel that, you know, that, that working relationship with, with the chamber as well as other business sector people have just brought it together. I was a little more critical about all of that, but I seem to have changed my mind thinking, all right, it is working and we are a part of that. So I, I'm happy to see that. But that doesn't happen if you don't have a good leader. It takes a team because you can't do anything by yourself.
Not at all.
Or either could we, actually. But you have a team that works together that makes it work, so. God bless you, keep it up, you'll be here forever, at least on our behalf.
Tell these guys that.
Don't worry, if they don't like what you have to say, they'll close the door. That's one good thing you have, that working relationship where someone could go in, shut the door, tell you what they think, walk out and it's okay. Never was like that before.
Anthony, congratulations. I've known you for many, many years. And I remember, I was Commissioner at the time when Tim Ryan, who really didn't get a lot of credit, and I got to give Tim Ryan credit. He was really pushing me heavy because he wanted to create a Port Authority. And he was basing it off of what Akron did because that was part of Tim's congressional district. So we met, I don't know how many times, and finally, we put something together. We had a dinner up at Vernon's. And we brought both counties together and we said, we're going to do this. And at the time, it sounded like a pipe dream. But I got to give, you know, Tim Ryan his, his due with getting that established. And now look where it is. And me and Anthony share a little bit of similarities. He worked for a congressman, I worked for a congressman. I remember when you were driving Ted Strickland around in that Ford Explorer, you guys are all over the place. And we used to meet down at Adrian's for the Democratic Dinner down there in Columbiana County. And so we share a lot of that. And I miss that place. And I got to say that there was a bit of time that I've never called Anthony, that he's never returned my call. He has a great background, he knows all the federal programs, he's with the governor of the state of Ohio, he's with John Boccheri in his congressional office. So Anthony definitely has all the rudiments of what it takes to be the director. And you have a wonderful staff, a wonderful board. And you have moved this Valley forward and you do it with a smile. You're never arrogant. You know, I always base on how people treat me. And you've always treated me with respect and a good heart. And that's what I admire about you the most. So congratulations to you.
You just want more peppers.
Yes. Oh, he gave me a jar of peppers like this. Oh, check the pictures out on Facebook. He has this whole operation, was that at your house?
Yeah.
My God, like a processing plant of that, that was amazing. Thank you, Anthony. Maybe Lou Vabella can help you organize.
Workers, then Marty can help me organize, they organize.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Thank God, that's a big job.
You're, you're right. When, when I got here, the Port Authority wasn't a very cohesive unit, you know, and, and it was, it was through some tumultuous times because we actually hired attorneys to try and disband it. You know, so we tried to disband it because we couldn't get members to quit or resign. And we decided we'll break off of Trumbull County and do it ourselves and start a new Port Authority. You know, that, that was to the point where it was. And I know I wanted to do a TIF when I was a trustee in Austintown. And I couldn't get the trustees to, to go along with it, you know, because they said, a TIF in Austintown? Oh, it'll make it look like we're giving a casino a tax abatement. It's not a tax abatement, you know, it's, they're paying all their taxes. Part of the new taxes go into a bowl that help infrastructure in the whole county, you know. And, and when I got to the county and spoke to you and, you know, got some, you know, some cooperation to move forward and, you know, and, and I had Carolyn Anthony here and we all embraced the idea and, you know, moving in a different direction. And, and, you know, Sarah had been, you know, in, in Youngstown and in the county and in the Valley for a long time, you know, working on business development and stuff. And, you know, and, and we wanted to get her away from the city, you know, where she was trying to create a jet and steal the water, you know, and, and so it was... But you know what, it's, it's such a conglomerate of great people, you know, moving in the right direction and moving in the same direction and keeping us all, you know, moving forward and progressing. And, and my colleagues have said it well, that, you know, everything is doing great. Huge projects and what do we call the, the mega projects? I forget what the chamber calls them all the time, but...
Mega projects.
Mega projects, okay. That are over X billion dollars, billion. And we have 10, you know, that are being considered for the Valley, 10, you know, so. And the Port Authority, a lot to do with that and what they're doing and how they're doing it. So, you know, Marty, you're, you're the head of the snake, you know, so we get to have your name on it. And I know that, you know, you, you definitely give all of your, your colleagues, you know, credit for everything. But, you know, you're, you're a great leader and you're great for the Valley and we're proud to have you, you know, so thank you.
Please, you gotta, don't be ashamed to come up and do the donut. You're welcome to do that.
Yeah, eat them.
I mean, you got donuts and coffee here.
Well, it's kind of tough to put them up front and have everybody say, come here, donut. We should put some on the side.
Put them on the side, maybe? Why don't you, then they can eat them.
At least one of them, yeah. Not all of them.
That'll weigh.
Krista, you're the best.
Got to try these great donuts made in Ohio, right there in Poland Township. Right, Nick?
Yep.
Yeah, it is, it's right there in that place.
It's right in that place?
Yeah, I know.
And I did buy cookies from there for an event. And the cookies were delicious too, Nick, so you know that.
You have to open them, so.
Of course.
Okay, we'll start off with public comments. Anyone have anything they'd like to add? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to approval of previous minutes of Board Meeting Number 39, Thursday, October 12th, 2020 to 23, and approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Okay, agreements, Commissioners, Public Relations. There you go, Megan.
Good morning. Item A is an agreement with City Printing Company for the 2023 Mahoning County Newsletter in the estimated amount of $44,398.60, and that's general funds.
Excellent, thank you. Engineers.
Commissioners, Letter B is an agreement with Byta Freightliner for repairs to vehicle number 534 in the estimated amount of $787.92, non-general.
Thank you. JJC.
Good morning, Commissioners, Nancy. C is Amendment Number One with Innovation Counseling and Wellness Center LLC for counseling and related services for the Pathways to Success Program in the additional amount of $10,000, non-general fund.
Thank you. Recycling.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item D is some lease agreements from some late coming communities for our drop-off recycling program.
Great, thanks. Sheriff Spark, Joe.
Good morning, everyone. He is a Saycom, a Saycom plus software program for one year, additional one year per unit pricing. It's non-general. And F is an agreement with Prosecutor's Office for redaction services effective January 1st.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve agreements.
Motion to approve agreements, Letters A through F.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Change orders, sanitary.
Commissioners, Letter A is extra work order number one with utility contracting. This is for additional services on the Old Winter Trail Pump Station project. This is improvement number 521 in the amount of $11,088.60, and these are non-general funds.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, change orders, 3A.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Okay, additions, resolutions, additions.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one, additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. Resolutions, Commissioners, OMB. Yeah, it's not here, I'll do this. Resolution approving to enter into the operating and maintenance agreement with Children's Services and Youngstown Central Area Community Improvement Corp. for the CSP building effective July 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2029. Commissioners, OMB Resolution approving the purchase of two properties, the CSP building and parking lot from Youngstown Central Area Community Improvement Corp. in the amount of $500,000, non-general and funded from the Children's Services Fund. And Commissioners, OMB Resolution authorizing a cash advance repayment for the COVID-19 fund to the general fund, the amount of $249,092. And engineers.
Commissioners, Letter D is a resolution authorizing the President of the Board to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Emergency Program. This is for an emergency slip repair project on North Lima Road near the Lake Evans Dam. And this is to execute contracts as required.
Thank you. Human resources, Karen.
Karen, you're on mute.
Oh, Karen, I can't hear you.
She's still muted.
She's muted, yeah.
You're muted.
She can't do it.
Okay, all right, human resources. Resolution approving the extension renewal rate schedule for the basic life and basic AD&amp;D effective January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2025. All right, sorry, Karen. Jobs and family.
Good morning, Commissioners, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Okay, good morning, Holly, Nancy, I don't see Jim, but good morning. Letter F, Job and Family Services Resolution approving the moral obligation payment of $5,102.40 to Team Office Technologies for the replacement of Mahoney and Columbiana Training Association's equipment that was damaged due to an office water line break. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Lead-based. All right, I'll see Phil. Okay, lead-based, Resolution approving the appointment of one office manager for the department. And lead-based Resolution approving the appointment of one housing specialist for the, for the department. Okay, do I have a motion to approve resolutions?
Motion to approve resolutions, A through H.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remilio Agueda?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficanti?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes. All right, alrighty. Relatively painless. Okay. Any department heads or electeds have anything to add?
Yes, Commissioners. I'd just like to say thank you to our union, UAW 1112 and my ASME 2001. They came together, we had a mammogram van come over to the agency. The women or men that was, one or two was able to go out and have a mammogram on the property. The unions also honored and paid respect to breast cancer survivors by having a little dessert for them and giving them a small gift to acknowledge our, our thanks and their blessings. So we came together as a group and it was a nice event at JFS yesterday honoring breast cancer survivors. So I just wanted to acknowledge our union, UAW 1112 and ASME 2001 that put that together for us at the agency.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thanks, Audrey. Okay, I'd give you a donut, but you're already over there.
We had enough cookies and donuts yesterday, but thank you so much.
Okay, well, anything?
No, I, I think we did, that it was, I thought this was a great meeting. I think it's important that when events are held in the county to honor our people that belong, I, I say belong to us as well. And we can't be there that we bring, and three Commissioners, we bring them to us and honor them as it's going to be on record at our meeting. Small business, not small, big business, I got to say. And to carry the torch for your family is the best thing in the world. And I applaud you for that and I applaud your husband. And keep it up because what, what they have started, you will continue to build on a national, maybe worldwide, wine-making tour. So I wish you the very best. I have big ideas for women in the business, especially when you break that ceiling with wine-making. There, I'm sure there's not more than 50 in the United States.
Definitely male-run.
I think so, and they must say that the women do have the taste. What we need.
For sure.
Good luck to both of you.
Thank you.
And Marty and Anthony, what can I say? I call you both, well, I know I call Marty religiously. He'll see the phone ring at 10 o'clock. 10 o'clock, oh my God, now what the hell's going on? And Anthony, keep up the good work, partnerships are great, friendship, good luck.
And I echo what Carol said, congratulations to everybody, this is good stuff happening in our Valley. Young entrepreneurs, businesses is continuing, Port Authority's strong. Now let's start focusing on positive things because there's enough ugliness going on right now in the world that I don't want to get into, but we have good things that are happening here and I want to just congratulate all of you and continue success. I couldn't agree more, Anthony. Thank you all, you know, to Lou Vabella, fantastic for the Valley, you two are, you know, set great examples for all of us, you know, young people, like Anthony said, coming back to the Valley, doing great things, you know, and we're proud that you're here, thank you. You know, Marty, you're a gem, you really are, you're a gem for the Valley, you know, you're one of those assets that we have that people don't realize how much connection and how much trickle-down effect it has and you do a lot of things for a lot of people. And Anthony, I put you right in the same boat, you know, just, you know, great things, good people, good people do good things and we have a lot of good people that work in this Valley, you know, and the only thing I want to end with is, on a sad note, one of our excellent employees, Diane Frye, our dog warden, her husband passed away two days ago, Jeff Frye, he worked in facilities for a while, he passed away of ALS and he struggled for a while, but just, you know, a person that you wanted to be around, you know, great sense of humor and just a talented individual and, you know, very sad, you know, too young, in his 60s that, you know, found out just a few years back and, you know, and it happened quick, so say a prayer for the Frye family for their loss of Jeff, so with that said, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Remedy O'Geady?
Yes.
Commissioner Traficante?
Yes.
Commissioner Ditser?
Yes.